Good after, good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting to order for May 12, 2021. The time is now seven o'clock. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, item C is our roll call. Council members, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Yes.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Is excuse this evening?
Present.
All right, thank you. Under consent agenda, we have items A, B, and C. It's council meeting minutes, payroll checks, claims, direct deposits. Thank you. Motion by Mark and second by Melissa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under reports tonight, we have Public Works and Library Committee. And filling in for Councilmember Rolinar is Councilmember Mary Hudson. Mary?
Thank you, Mary. Tonight, we held our Public Works/Library/Public Safety Committee meeting here in this room. We started off with the approval of minutes and worked right into some reports from our distinguished directors. First thing was Blaine Chesterfield talked about the partnership where we're working with Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group on an agreement to restore the 180 feet of floodplain and riparian vegetation on city-owned property along the Skagit River, between the river and the wastewater treatment plan, plant. The restoration work will provide trees and shading along the south bank of the river. The restoration work will be fully funded by two grants, one from Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office and also from Puget Sound Energy. Next, we moved into some project updates with Bill Bullock. A couple of things we're going to talk about tonight on our council agenda are the 2021 street improvements and the 2122 on-call surveying. And then talked a little bit about some projects that are underway right now. The maintenance shop canopy progress includes right now a fuma hood and roll-up door have been relocated and installed. Engineering is complete. Apron slabs have been installed, installed as have the main slab forms. The solid waste administration building addition progress includes the concrete has been cut and demolished, and the false wall has been installed. These are both really great projects that we're excited to get completed. Escobell talked about the wastewater treatment administration building remodel addition. It's essentially complete, and the crew should be able to occupy the building within the following week. And I know they're very excited about that, and as we are too. Next, we moved on to the Library Committee. Topics, Isaac Huffman, our director, talked about a couple of things. We have secured some funding for our Library Commons Project, right now at about 2.5 million. Some of it goes to the EV charging stations that we're hoping to install, and others just building. And, right? Okay. Not anything else to say about that? Isaac also talked a little bit about, the goal is to reopen the library. We know people are anxious for this. They're shooting for a July 6 goal. Some of the slowdowns for us are staffing. It's, we've had time to reimagine a little bit about the library and how it can be staffed and run. So when we reopen, hopefully on July 6, it might not be at the full capacity that we have, we want to get to. But we will start slow, and as we pick up steam, we will open more. So just, I'm just very excited, and I think a lot of our community is very excited that we will be trying to reopen on July 6. So news to follow on that. Talked about some projects that have brought our communities together. There was a Library Giving Day where 33 donors raised $3,371, which is really pretty exciting. The foundation will be rewriting some of the, or the mission statement post-COVID-19, which we know things have changed in a lot of places. So they're going to rewrite and reimagine the mission statement. They have given, the library has given out 3,120 seed packets to residences of Mount Vernon. Pretty exciting. People are pretty jazzed about getting seed packets and getting the kids involved in growing flowers and vegetables, all the good stuff. There was a March mystery game that the library put on. I have to say, I did sign up. I made it through one phase. After that, it was just, it was too much for my brain. But there were 38 active players. 18 players solved the mystery. A lot of them were teams, and their family members got together and made teams to do this. So it was pretty exciting. I think it brought a lot of people together and just reimagined their family time or their get-together time with their friends. And 55% of the players purchased something from the downtown merchants during, while they were playing this game, because there was community partnerships with that. So I think that's pretty exciting and happy news for our downtown merchants. Andrea, in our department, in our library department, has a capstone project. It includes dance, music, reading, outreach, and they actually, the dancers actually performed for the governor. So that was pretty exciting for them and to showcase Mount Vernon a little bit. So she's, she has involved over 300 students. So that's pretty exciting in our community. And on May 26, we expect here at the council to see the contracts come forward from HKP, Henry Klein Partnership, talking about the plans for the new Library Commons Project. So we're pretty excited about that. The last, the last portion of our meeting was Public Safety Committee, and it was discussed by Assistant Chief Harris. Talked about a live-fire training burn that will be conducted on Saturday, June 12, at the corner of 30th and College Way. Traffic will be reduced to one lane. The live-fire or the bulk of the training will be from about 9 to 1, but 8 to 5 is the window that there, you know, things will happen before and after. So we will be putting out a flyer to the residents, especially in that area of the city, so that they're aware of what's going on and won't be alarmed by smoke and fire coming from there, calling the fire department, who will already be on scene. So it's good, it's good training for our firefighters. And it's nice to have the offer from somebody in our community to, to let us do this for them, but it's good for both of us. So it's a good thing. For the good of the order, we talked, we had a really robust conversation about vaccine, vaccination incentives, where Skagit County is at about 50% vaccination, at least the first dose, and we really need to get higher. So we've been talking a little bit about incentivizing people to get vaccines. Because although we would like them to do it without incentives, incentives are nice, and we all like that. So we're talking about that. And we also have the offer of a possible legislative review at one of our council meetings, where we would possibly have Rep. Ramel, Rep. Licanoff, and Senator Lovlett here to talk about some of our legislative items. So that's exciting. It hasn't happened for many years. So we're excited about that. We adjourned our committee at about 10 minutes to 7.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Item B tonight is our Community Comments. So as we have been kind of a hybrid public comment period, I'm going to ask Peter Donovan if there were any comments that came in via the email, and then we'll move to anyone who's here in person. So, Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yes, there were two emails sent to you for public comment. And we'll read both of those tonight. The first is from Larry and Patricia Hilliard. And this email was actually sent to the county commissioners, and your council email was copied on. So I think for awareness, and they understand that this is not your item that you were voting on. But they wrote, "Dear County Commissioners, please do not docket for adoption the comprehensive plan change that will allow major residential development in the Skagit countryside. Skagit County should honor its commitment to send the majority of future population growth to the cities and towns. Protect the rural character of Skagit County. Do not let developers turn Skagit into a suburb. Vote no on allowing fully contained communities in Skagit County. Vote no on docketing LR 20-4." Larry and Patricia Hilliard. The second email was from Sherry Sennett, and Sherry wrote, "Hello, I'm a Mount Vernon resident who is also a student at Western Washington University, and I'm working on an assignment about local relationships between settler and tribal communities. I've looked at some of the current events happening throughout Skagit County, and while I noticed that there are active efforts to form stronger relationships with tribes in Anacortes and La Conner, I couldn't find much on Mount Vernon, at least not on the main city page or through a basic internet search. The history tab on the Mount Vernon city page only shares a narrative from, from the settler point of view, and only settlers are mentioned. For me, this paints a rather short and narrow depiction of this region's history. What did this region look like before the arrival of settlers? What was my neighborhood like before the houses and hospitals were built? I'd like to ask you all the following questions. Are there any plans to update the city's website? Could Mount Vernon be more inclusive in its historical narrative? Is Mount Vernon making any efforts to form stronger relationships with the tribes? Would the Skagit peoples like to have more visible presence in Mount Vernon? If so, is there a way that Mount Vernon can help support them by promoting their cultural events and other activities? Is their language at risk of extinction? I personally would like to learn about Mount Vernon's history from a wider range of perspectives. I would especially love to hear about what life was like in this region for those who lived here before the settlers arrived. As a side note, I wonder if forming stronger relationships with the tribes might also help with the recent issues we've been having with illegal fireworks use in the region. Thank you very much for your time. I hope to follow up on this topic again in the near future." Sherry. Those are all the public comments on order.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I'll just maybe make a comment since to, to send up questions to all seven council members and the mayor, you certainly, as council members, are happy to respond, whatever you'd like. But as an update, there is a brief history page that's on the city website. We're happy to, of course, happy to take a look at that. It was authored in 1998, and so I'd honestly say I don't think a lot of us have paid a whole lot of attention to what it says. And so, I mean, other than from an expanded viewpoint. So I've already talked to Isaac about that. I also don't feel that Google is a way to be an adequate searcher, learn of information about history of this nature. And so I'm happy to say that our library has a complete Northwest collection, including several books from our local tribe's perspective and history. And I'd invite anyone interested to please use your privilege as a library member, as the city resident and the library card, to in, look into a lot more research and information that our library can provide. So I'll throw that out there. And then lastly, our Skagit Council of Governments includes all tribal representatives, meets once a month. So, so that we answer some of the questions for the council. Right? With that, Community Comments, if there's anyone here physically that would like to make a comment, you're welcome to step to the podium at this time. Is there anyone here for Community Comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move along. Item C is our Councilmember Comments. Any Councilmember comments this evening?
May I have a moment?
Okay, well, I'm first, and we'll go to Mark.
Thank you. Well, Sunday was Mother's Day. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't forget, right? But I just wanted to give a quick moment to just thank all the mothers, all of our mothers, and all the mothers that we have here presently in the room. Just a sincere thank you to each and every single one of you. So thanks.
That's gracious. All right, Mark?
I just wanted to brief council and the public on the fireworks today. As you recall, council decided to form a Citizen Council Advisory Committee to make recommendations to the Mount Vernon City Council. We've met three times. Our final meeting was this evening at 5:00. And the recommendations that are going to be made to council are to basically leave our fireworks ordinance as-is, maybe clarify some of the language in there so that it's maybe a little clearer for folks to know what's legal and what's not. And then to up the civil penalty from a $50, and then escalated from there to a $355 civil penalty. $250, that will remain in the city, and the other $105 goes to the state. The county, the committee felt that, from the citizen input that we had received, that most of the, the concerns about fireworks dealt with illegal fireworks, fireworks that are already illegal, and that a complete ban wouldn't change that type of activity. They also felt that a more severe penalty may deter some of that. So that's what's going to be coming before council. Kevin is going to be working on that. He'll get together with the Fire Chief and Fire Marshal, along with Chief Kimmich, and kind of finalize the language there, and then bring that to council within the next two or three weeks.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other Councilmember comments tonight? Okay, moving on. Under Mayor's report, wanted to really publicize a great event that's happening this Saturday, May 15, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's at the Burlington Edison High School Field House, and this is a vaccination event. There is no appointment needed. This is for a first or a second dose Pfizer vaccination for ages 16 and up. No appointment needed at all. Really, really want to encourage our residents in, in Skagit County to, to seek out vaccination. You know, if we can get a high enough rate, that means we can defeat the virus. And that means all the arguments about public health measures and masking and distancing and all that could go away. So there you go. There's your answer. Go get some vaccination. So please check that out. The Public Health Department phone number is 360-416-1500, or you can go online. But again, Burlington Edison, this weekend from 10 to 3. So. Also, the farmer's market is opening this Saturday. We're very excited. They have been able to successfully operate during COVID with appropriate precautions, and so we're welcoming them back. They're opening at 9:00, and they go until 2. I'm going to forget the time. They go to, yeah, until 2. So it's every Saturday up on our waterfront plaza, and that goes from this Saturday until October 9. So we're really lucky that we get to go to the farmer's market again. And then next Wednesday evening, our 10th Legislative District, which is of course part of Mount Vernon, anyone residing south of Division Street would be in our 10th Legislative District. They're having a town hall. As of this, this evening, they didn't have any links up on their websites, but it is next Wednesday at 6:30. I've been asked to moderate, so I'm excited to do that. So if you're interested in that legislative town hall, please just go on to the internet. You can even search for just, like, say, one of our representatives. And I'm sure that they're going to have that information up on their websites. I'm hoping by tomorrow. They were going to do it by end of today. So I'm just excited that our representatives are available for us to have a town hall with them. So. And that's it for this part. Item E is any committee agenda requests? Any committee agenda requests? Okay. Moving on then. There is no unfinished business. On new business, item A is our Habitat for Humanity update. So I'm going to have Peter Donovan introduce this particular item. So, Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello again, Council. Skagit Habitat for Humanity states that their vision is to empower people to empower themselves. And their mission is to put people together to build homes, community, and hope. And they've been doing that since 1994 in Skagit County. Tonight, Habitat's Executive Director Teresa Pugh and Resource Development Coordinator TJ Lyric are here to update City Council on what Skagit Habitat for Humanity has been up to. So I will invite Teresa and TJ. Come on up.
Good evening. We want to thank you for having us here tonight to present what we are graciously going to be using your money for. Last year, you awarded $100,000 in CDB grant monies, and that's going to be used for homeownership down payment assistance. I'm going to have TJ speak most of the presentation. But again, I want to thank you as, as well. Before I forget, I want to thank you also, after our presentation, you're going to be talking about your 2021 and 22, moving forward with your plans. And we want to thank you for supporting us then. And this particular project couldn't happen once we applied last year and you approved our application for the down payment assistance grants. We didn't have land in Mount Vernon at the time. And we've been looking, you know, we're always looking for land. If anybody out there has land that they would like to work with us on to make it affordable for its purchase, we're always looking for land. But at the time, we didn't have land. But I had been working with some community partners, and we, you'll be hearing later on, we had a very gracious community, a family, that donated some land for this particular project. And that is one of the main reasons why we're able to build on this project. So TJ, if you would like to give some more information.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. So the, the clients and families that we work on are always talking about dreams. And we like to work on realities and affordability for homeownership. When I was growing up, I was always told that your house is your castle. As you can see, there's my beautiful castle on the right. But the picture on the left is actually one of our Habitat for Humanity homes that we just finished building recently for a family member. The house above sometimes is the houses that our families that come to us are. And some of them even don't have that good of a house. So we try to work on affordability. Right at the present, three in seven households have what's called housing cost burden. And what that is, is where people are spending more than 30% of their income just for housing, which causes a lot of problems with health, education, you know, food and things like that. And this ends up representing all households in Skagit County and the city, 47.7 of the households, according to the latest census data. And when you just look at the rentals or couch surfing, 46% of the renters right now are cost burden. And a lot of it has to do with lack of affordable housing, and of course, inventory, like you all know. But also, in the last 14 months, housing costs have increased 21%. And the availability is not there for someone that is making $35,000 or less, which is what 80% of the house, the hard-working, cost-burdened family's income is right now. As was mentioned, we started in '94. We built two homes a year. And right at the moment, we've also repaired 40 additional homes to make people's lives a lot better. We're presently building house number 40, and we have built in City of Mount Vernon 20 homes so far since we started. At the Fraser property, we'll be building house number 41, 42, 43, and 44. What we try to do is assist hard-working families with homeownership and affordable mortgages. And the families that get chosen put in 500 hours of sweat equity, so they actually help build their own homes. Nice thing about for the city is Skagit Habitat homeowners have paid, without taking this year in account, $772,895 in property tax. That would be lost if they were just renting or not having a home at all. So we work with hard-working families that are in the 30 to 60 AMI, which is the area of mean income. That's our niche, and we modify our homes to meet the needs of the family. So several of our homes at the moment have disabled individuals, and we do ADA modifications so that they can stay in the home as they grow. We operate with volunteers, donations, fundraisers, and grants. What makes our model successful is we are based on mentoring, support, education for the families to build independence and success. And we always have our affordable mortgage payments set at 30% of whatever that family's gross income is, and that also includes escrow. Nice thing is even during the recession, and because you've been giving us money to do down payment assistance, even during recession and downturn of economy, we have never had a family that had their home repossessed. I don't know how many banks can say that. So what are we doing with your money? As it relates to the comprehensive housing plan that you guys passed a while ago. Right now, we're doing a total investment for the next three years of $1.2 million.
Just in the Fraser property alone. So these four lots that we'll be building, it'll be well over $1.2 million that we'll be investing.
And $300,000 will be for the infrastructure, and about $900,000 will be for the homes that we're building. We recently received a shop grant from HUD of $56,000 for infrastructure, which will help us with a lot of the infrastructure we're going to be doing. We hired Geotech for environmental review, and hopefully that will be completed in the next few weeks. And we've required bids for their work by Welch Brothers. We've submitted permits for the fill-in grade already, and we'll be submitting our, the right-of-way and performance bonds when we contract. Our preliminary house plans are already being completed, and we're working out right now with the city on the farm water flow requirements and permits to make everything flow quickly and simply so we can get families in their homes. On this round of four lots for four homes, we actually had 37 families apply. We've already approved one, and we're working on three more that are waiting for approvals. But it was like overwhelming to have that many people applying. As you can see on the picture, the lots that we have are on the corner of East Blackburn and South Loventure Road. And that's where our homes, number 41 through 44, are going to be. And here's a, an idea of And here's an idea of our house plans and where the roads are going to be and how it's going to look once they're all built.
If you currently go to the corner of South Loventure and Blackburn, I'm sure most of you have seen that there's an empty lot that's been sitting there. It's on the other side of the Big Fur development. And so that's, that's the, the one road that you see is, is the fire lane. And that's where the city is seeing that'll be the interest into the, to the plot.
And then here's a, we've already got a picture of what the house is going to look like inside, as well as two pictures of what the house is going to look on the outside. And these are pictures of some of our families. You know, we have one single mom with three kids and one single mom with a child. And, and so we mainly focus on families that are hardworking and can afford a mortgage. So I want to thank the mayor and the board for supporting us and for the support to our families that can bridge to their own castle hopefully someday. And as Teresa Pugh said, we're always looking for land for future builds. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
All right. Thank you for the great information. So Council, do you have any questions for TJ or Teresa? Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you for your presentation. It's awesome. Good to see you, Teresa. I have a question about the location, although I think it's a great location. Have you reached out to the, the Big Fur community? Do they know what's going on?
That's what we're working on next. Yeah, the, the owners of the property had kind of note, made notifications. And we will be doing several public presentations because in our world for low income housing, sometimes you will get what they call in the industry NAMBs, not in my neighborhood. And so that's going to be part of our presentation is to the neighborhood to make them, you know, to, to be able to present the plans, that they're nice homes, to let, to allow them to meet some of the families and just, just to give them the information. If you look in all the locations on the 40 houses that we've built, the, the homes are just like any other home. You know, our models are smaller square footage. But they take care of their homes because they put so much sweat equity into them. And that's their forever home. So definitely we will be reaching out to the public, especially Big Fur, because they, they, there will be people concerned about having low income housing next to their neighborhood. Good question.
Thank you.
All right, Richard.
I, I mean, I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing. This is, you're one of my favorite organizations. And I think part of it is just sort of the volunteerism, the sort of ownership of the individuals and all the people that come together to make the houses, to build the houses and how you sort of just pull it all together, you know, wherever you could find the pieces. And it's just really inspiring to me. So thank you so much for everything you do. And good luck with the families. I did, I was thinking that, you know, we need 10 more of these programs. And your numbers sort of reflect that, you know, 40 people, 40 families. And only four can be successful. And that only happens every year or two, you know. So yeah, how do we grow and expand this thinking and, and bring all of the different groups like yours, working in different niches together to do more? And so I'm, I'm working on that every day and I'm so happy that you're working on it as well.
Thank you, Richard. And, and we as well strategically, yes, we're building two, but we're looking to increase that. And it's with partnerships like with the city, what you're pushing for with the down payment assistance. That's a big help for us and so that we know, we received the, the award. And, and you guys are allowing us to finish out on the project that we're currently working on in Cedar Woolley and be able to utilize the funds. The funds, just to let you know, the funds won't be used for down payment until the year of 2022, because that's when we'll have the two houses finished. And then the next round of funding, same thing, it'll be, you know, the year after. But we are looking to increase. And it's with partnership, it's with donors, it's with business, it's with in-kind donations through businesses. It's with our volunteers. So our supporters are why we're increasing. I get to see it in, in every day with the families that come in. And for us, it's, the education along the way is huge because that's what makes them successful. And that's part of the reason why there's no foreclosures. I just had one of the families that just moved in in March. And she was excited to tell me that the financial classes that we taught her and her husband really allowed them to start working together a couple of years ago when they first were selected. They're in such a different, a financial, a financial success now because of all the classes that they took, because of the communication. And then now that they'll be in their home, they'll be saving at least $450 a month where they would have been paying for rent. Most of ours, they're saving on average now that the rents have gone up. Most of our families will save $500 to $600 a month not having to pay for rent. So that, that is money that can, they can utilize so that they're not going back into debt, that the, that they can actually be a part of our community and give back to the community. And they learn so much. I appreciate that you, you realize they learn so much through that because they're volunteering. They're working alongside volunteers from the community. And the, and this one homeowner said, you know, my son just turned 16. And during the Christmas season, he received his first job for Kohl's. And we were able to teach him about finances and opening a checking account and opening a savings account and, and not spending his money and, and how to utilize that because of the classes that we've learned. So it's not just about today and the families, it's about the future and training future generations so they won't be in poverty. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I want to take a quick moment, very quickly, just to thank both of you. Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. The alarm is where, well, the, the numbers were alarming. You mentioned three out of seven households in the county are housing cost burden. That's pretty concerning. But thank you for sharing those numbers. I, I'd rather know than, than not know. And thank you for the beautiful work that both of you and that your organization is doing. You can just see how great the work is just through the smile on those families. You can see it right through their masks, even if they have one on. You can really see it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then Mark?
So I'm just like, say, I've always appreciated the work that Habitat for Humanity has done. I was exposed to it early on, back in my lumberyard days. We, we worked with them way back then. And, you know, the, the work that you guys do is, is just phenomenal. I did have a question, however. You had talked about so folks that need some ADA help and, and, you know, I know that, that there's a lot of sweat, sweat equity that goes into it. If you have a disabled, somebody that's disabled in a family, is there a way that the public can volunteer to help on a project and, and apply credits towards those, maybe somebody that isn't capable of doing the work?
Yes, some of our families, so in previous homes that we built, we had one homeowner that was a quadriplegic. And so he was obviously very limited on what he could do. But the reality is, is he showed up to the job site every day with that smile on his face. He had his daughter there. He made lifelong friends with the volunteers. And church members of his came out, fam, family members, people from the community came out. And those all counted towards his sweat equity hours. We had another one that was a paraplegic and it was the same thing. Two houses, the one, one of the homes, the families that are just moved in in March, their son is disabled. So the, the, the parents are not disabled. So they were able to, with volunteers and their family, work the sweat equity hours. The, the 40th house that we're building in Cedar Woolley, they're, that she, one of her children is disabled as well. But definitely at any time, anyone can go to our website. And on our website, we have, you can apply to become a volunteer. So anyone in the community that wants to volunteer can become a volunteer. And if you specifically want to volunteer for one of the families that are coming up, our families are working, they're working 40 hours. We usually select them a little ahead of time because we know they have lives. They go to church, they work, they Zoom for school now. I mean, there's so much responsibility that they do need help on those hours. But part of the hours, really what we've learned is the hours, one, they get to meet other volunteers and they see what it means giving back. And so most of our families, after they've been in for their house, homes for a while, they now become volunteers in the community because they see what it did for them and their family. And they teach their children to become volunteers. So again, it's future as well as it's just appreciation of that. So anyone can volunteer for Habitat. COVID, we were a little limited, but thankfully we're, we have all of our safety measures in place. And so definitely we could always use the help for those families.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again for coming tonight and sharing some really good information with us and just good news too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So item B tonight is our public hearing regarding our 2021 through 2022 CDBG action plan. And Peter Donovan is here to present. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. The CDBG annual action plan is a plan for how the City of Mount Vernon is going to spend the federal funding that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides to us for local needs within the City of Mount Vernon. This year HUD has provided the city with $369,122 through its Community Development Lot Grant Program. And that's about an average amount that the city sees each year for this, somewhere between 350, 400,000. On February 24th of this year, the city invited the public, including social service agencies, to comment on the current needs in our community. City staff reviewed those comments and used them to inform its draft annual action plan. The draft action plan was made available to the public on April 14th. And an invitation to comment was extended to the community at that time. This public comment period ends tomorrow, May 13th. But tonight, there is an additional opportunity for the public to address the City Council with any comments. The proposed plan includes allocations for community action of Skagit County, Skagit Habitat for Humanity, the Helping Hands Food Bank. And Mayor, no written comments were received from the public for this year's action plan. But with that, following a public hearing tonight, staff is recommending that council approve the 21 to 2022 CDBG annual action plan.
All right. Any questions for Peter before we open the public hearing?
Zach, one question. If our public comment period ends tomorrow, wouldn't it be just a little premature to adopt the budget tonight?
That's a good question. We could certainly bring it back if there was more comment. We could put a hold on it.
I don't want for a monkey wrench into anything, but it just seems like if our public comment period ends tomorrow, taking action tonight would, would circumvent that public comment period.
Yeah, we, we.
It's just a procedural thing is in my mind.
We have provided the, the required amount of days, I think yesterday or the day before. So we've, we've checked that box. We would receive comments and we set that date to correspond with Skagit County's action plan as well. And we'd be turning those in on Friday. But yeah, I understand what you're asking.
Good. Any other questions for Peter before we open?
Well, no, I actually wanted to ask Mark a question. Would, would we be able to, if we decided to move forward with this, could we put in a, a caveat if there were any comments that came in after that? Okay, I don't know. Okay, so I'm sorry. I just want to make sure. Your procedure, you're my policy procedure guy, so I just thought I'd ask.
I'd ask if there's any kinds of city issues in this. I mean, I know all these folks are ready to go and provide these services. How does two weeks affect that?
Do you mean prolonging the comment period for two weeks?
I mean, waiting until we've heard from the public to adopt the plan if we waited two weeks to do that.
So yeah, the, the deadline for this plan to be submitted to HUD is Friday. So we would need, we need to have that before then. We have, we have checked the required box, but yes, I understand with the extra day. I, I think that's been the way that, that we've done these hearings for years. So.
Maybe, maybe for future reference, let's cut the cutoff day, the day that we're going to take the action.
Sure.
And that way there's no mystery there.
Yep, makes sense.
And hearing all that, I'd make a motion to.
Oh, we have to have a public hearing first.
Hold on one second. Thank you. All right. All right. So we'll go ahead and open the open record public hearing for the 2021 to 2022 CDBG action, action plan. And since there were no comments submitted, we'll move on to if there is anyone here that would like to speak. Anyone willing to comment? All right. Seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the open record public hearing. All right, thank you.
Hearing all that, make a motion to approve the. The CDB action plan for 2021, 2022.
Great, thank you. So a motion by Richard and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Item C tonight is the appointment to the Arts Commission. And Jennifer Burner, our Director of Parks and Enrichment Services, is here for the sound. Jennifer?
Good evening. How's everybody? So our Arts Commission applicant, we're real excited about. Her name is Leigh Anne, and she is a retired Leigh Anne Rust. She's a retired high school visual arts teacher. And she has a lot of experience just in general government art as well. She's served on a board of directors for an art gallery. She has participated in other cities such as, she moved up from central California. Such, so Fairfield was one of her cities where she was on their Arts and Public Places Committee. She's taught art classes, just has a varied amount of experience. And she sat in on one of our Arts Commission meetings and still wanted to be a part of us. So we would like to recommend having her be appointed as one of our Arts Commissioners.
Great. We also had a kind of an interview informal with her with Kevin, who's the President of the Arts Commission. So we try and go through a little bit of a process to make sure folks know what they're getting into and get, have us get to know them as well. So all right. Any questions for Jennifer?
I'd view the council ratifying the mayor's appointment of Leigh Anne Rust to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission.
All right, thank you. A motion by Mark and a second by Wong. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right. Item C is an arts donation. And again, Jennifer Burner will present. Jennifer?
So it's an arts night tonight. We are very excited to bring before you, we mentioned this a little bit in a couple of weeks ago when we did an update for you. But artist Alfred Courier is wanting to donate one of his pieces, one of his one of a kind pieces. It's an oil painting called Overall Making Hay that he would like to donate to the city as part of our arts collection. And it would be one that would be hanging in the library. He's asked for it to go, to be hung in the library, which will be actually very beautiful when it goes into the new commons project, right? The Arts Commission reviewed the art piece and unanimously recommended the piece to be, come part of our art collection here with the city. And the artist has agreed to the donation agreement, which you've seen attached here. So we've already run that past him and he is fine with that donation agreement. So we are bringing it before council to ratify that donation.
All right. Any questions for Jennifer?
Wonderful piece by a wonderful artist.
You gonna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the art donation and authorize mayor enter into the donation agreement for public art with artist Alfred Courier.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Who's that? I didn't hear. Okay, sorry. Okay, a motion by Richard and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right. Item E is the reorganization of Parks and Enrichment Services Department. And Jennifer's here for this.
So this is one that we had a brief discussion about a couple of weeks ago that I brought before you. And so wrote up an agenda item that gave you a little more information on it, hopefully, and answered some of your questions. But just in short review, as part of our discussion a couple of weeks ago, COVID-19 significantly impacted our city work program. And so with that, that program provided our community service projects as an alternative to sentencing. Since the courts and everything have not been up and operational, we changed some of our guidelines to kind of make sure that we have the right people attending the program. We just do not have anybody participating at this point in time and coming through the court system. So one of the things that I was trying to take a look at is how can we reorganize our resources? So we have taken a look at it. And we think the best way to move forward is for us to redirect our resources by eliminating our CWP supervisor position and actually turning that into a foreman position. The difference there is the foreman position is going to be able to offer more services to us just in general while we're through the pandemic, but even after the pandemic. They have a pesticide license, so they'll be able to do spraying and such that current, our current CWP supervisor does not have. And we also. And we also, they will also have a CDLA license, so they'll be able to tow certain vehicles and things and move equipment around. And they'll have their flager certificate. And we're also writing into this job announcement for them to get a aquatics pesticide license because a lot of the spraying that they'll be doing is in the downtown area by the water. So taking a look at that, we needed to just figure out how best to move forward with the department and the resources. We also are asking for this position to be a Wednesday through Sunday position, so it will give us a foreman coverage over the weekend, which we currently don't have. So we'll have someone in a leadership role working on the weekends. And one of our new maintenance utility operators also has that same schedule that will be reporting to this person. So we'll have two very strong individuals on the weekend to support our two part-time staff that also work over the weekend. So this gives us a really strong crew over the weekend, which we haven't had before. And as we all know, things happen in our parks over the weekend when we have the most amount of people in them. So it will cut down on our call-out rate and some of that as well. When we're able to operate safely, the foreman will run the community work program. And we'll, we'll adjust that accordingly. And it may not be a program that runs five or five days a week, just depending on the number of people going through it. But they will be able to run that program. Other cities have this level of a foreman running those types of programs. So this isn't unique just to Mount Vernon. And there's no financial impacts to making this adjustment for our 2021 budget. And I think at the back of our memo, I had presented to you, which I presented a couple of weeks ago, the org chart that kind of lays out where we're at now and what we would be moving to. So at this point, I just would open it up for any questions or comments that you might have and asking for approval with the reorg.
All right, questions for Jennifer on this?
I don't have any questions. I do have just a quick little comment. It just, you had mentioned, and this is more for the folks at home, the closure of the court system. I'm kind of involved with the court system during my day job. And so I just want to point out that the court system, although it slowed down significantly, we did, we do remain open and we do need to provide that level of access to justice. And so I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you.
Given that, I'll make a motion that council approve the reorganization of Parks and Rec to include the elimination of the city work program supervisor position and the creation of the new Parks Foreman Position.
I will second. I want to say thank you very much for the work that went into this because I think it's shown how you've reimagined the department. And I like the fact that we have weekend staff, a strong, and a strong supervisor staff. And I like the fact that this person has a CDL. I think that's huge. So I appreciate all the hard work that went in. And the fact that it doesn't cost us any more money is just icing on the cake. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Right, great. So there is a motion by Melissa and a second by Mary. Any other discussion? All right, with that, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, item F tonight is a ward filter system purchase agreement. And our fire chief, Brian Bryce, is here for this item. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'm before you with a presentation to approve an agreement for the ward filter system. So firefighting, you know, we're faced with many hazards that sometimes we can't mitigate. However, diesel exhaust and the contaminants that are inside of our stations are one of those. And so by redesigning our fire stations is one way we can minimize the impact to our firefighters, but also minimizing the amount of diesel exhaust that comes from our vehicles inside of the station is another way we can do that. Dating back many years, the city has put in the CIP for a filtration system, a primal vent or an exhaust system to be in the stations. As we moved forward, we were able to find some funding through different mechanisms, through the fire impact fees, also through some GEMT revenue, also through then again, what we're doing, our redesign of our fire stations. We had contemplated adding in the filter system through, to the stations. We further researched this, and we found a system by the ward system, which mounts on the vehicles as opposed to being a facility mounted. What that allows us to do is have them on the vehicles, and we're not constrained when we put our fire apparatus in the station to where they have to be parked. If you can picture it, there's large tubes that hang from the ceiling that come down. They have to be placed onto the exhaust. That, again, further exposes the firefighter to having to be right by the exhaust as they put that tube on there. They have some breakaway mechanisms, but they also have a prone to sometimes not release themselves, and then it causes damage, which causes a repair. This system being mounted on the fire apparatus does not have those things. Associated with this system is also a filter that is replaceable. It's exchange system through ward where we send that back in. They refurb it, and they send us a new one, and we replace it there on the fire apparatus. The overall cost for this system is less than a fixed facility system there in the station. So with that, we're seeking an agreement to authorize the mayor to enter in this agreement for the purchase of the ward filter system.
Great, any questions for Chief Bryce on this?
I'll just say, I know that a lot of research has gone into this. There's been some information passed back and forth since December of 2019. I know that the chief and Gary Owens and everybody's worked hard on, on trying to see if this would work. And I think it's a great solution, much less money than what we'd have spent on a system. And it's going to provide our firefighters the protection and safety that they need. So I think it's a, it's a good project.
Great, all right, Richard?
And I as well, I'm super excited that this is here after, you know, some time of working to get it done. I guess my question is the, just the financial piece of it. I think I remember we put the whole like $175,000 last year into the budget, but we had to withhold some, half of that. So wasn't there like $87,500 in the budget? And this is $122,000. So where is the money coming from? It's all budgeted?
Yeah, what was, what was in the budget, though, the 87 that you're referring to, that was coming from the general fund. And then there was the other funds that were coming from the fire impact fee fund. So the 87 that you're referring to was budgeted through the general fund budget. So those funds, I talked with Doug Valesky, the finance manager, and he said those funds are available for us to utilize for this purchase. In addition to that, when we were specing the new redesigns of Fire Stations 2 and 3, we had originally contemplated that cost for that filter system being in the cost for the fire stations. So again, there is that, I'll call it the savings because that no longer has to be put into under the redesign there, that then it would be available for us to use.
And the shorter answer is it is budgeted?
Yes.
I understand correctly. This covers all of our apparatus except for two that are too old to actually mount these units on. But those two units will be replaced shortly.
No, it covers all of our frontline apparatus that are parked inside of the station. The two that I'm referring to that cannot, that's only for the filter exchange program. So the system could still go on them, but the type of filter and that design of that system has to have a different mechanism. So they can't change those filters out. That was the difference with those.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Chief Bryce?
If there's no other questions, I would, I would make a motion that council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with the ward company.
Okay, motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Item G tonight is a bid award for the 2021 Street Improvement Projects. And our city engineer, Bill Bullock, is here. Bill?
Thank you, good evening, council. So this first item is for our street improvement program. It's an annual program. This particular piece of it focuses on repaving. We will be repaving Little Mountain Road that's within the city limits. We do have a portion of Little Mountain that goes into the county, back into the city and back into the county. That piece that's in the county is what we'll be repaving. And then LaVenture Road from Section Street down to College Way. And then First Street from LaVenture to Wau. And the First Street section is the one we, last council meeting, we entered into a local, inter-local agreement with Skagit PUD. And so there's a reimbursable portion of that segment of road. But we received really good bids, so I'm really happy about it. I haven't really seen paving prices these last two years that we've gotten in the last 15 years of my career. So about $78 to $80 a ton for the pavement, about 8,000 tons of pavement. And $1.2 million and some change is what we will be awarding to Lakeside. And they should be beginning in probably first week to maybe even second week of July.
All right, any questions for Bill on this?
I'd just say, I've never seen, looking at the six bids, they're all even close. I mean, I've never, usually there's such a big gap in there somewhere.
The difference between the first and second bidder is only $2,000.
It's amazing.
Add a two, add a $1.2 million. It's, yeah.
Super tight.
I would make a motion or move that we approve the contract with Lakeside.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mary and a second by Wong. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right, item H is the approval of a professional services agreement for on-call surveying. And again, Bill Bullock is here. Bill?
Thank you. So this is a contract, like it says, for on-call surveying. We do have need for, on a task order basis, for surveying services. So what this does is establish a two-year contract with, and I always get this wrong, Harmson, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. I've been mispronouncing their name for the last three weeks, so I apologize. And a lot of what we use this for is for our curb ramp program especially. It's one of the main needs we have for surveying every year as we design those things. But we do have other needs for survey services throughout the year. And like I said, this is a task order basis. This contract is set up so they have a maximum amount, annual amount of about $50,000. We generally don't spend that much. But if for some reason we had a need where we needed to utilize them for more than the amount, we would bring that back to council. Those details as part of a contract amendment for that one particular task order, whatever it may be. But this lets us, when we have needed those services, to be able to hire them on an on-call task order basis very quickly and efficiently, so.
Great, any questions for Bill?
I move that we operate the mayor to enter in our professional services agreement with Harmson LLC.
All right, motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Bill. Item I tonight is the introduction of an ordinance to approve a franchise agreement with Skagit Net. And our city attorney, Kevin Rogerson, is here for this item. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Before you tonight is the introduction of an ordinance. We're not asking you to take any action tonight because state law requires that we have to have a waiting period. The ordinance, if adopted, would grant a franchise between the city and a LLC known as Skagit Net. Skagit Net was a limited liability company organized and formed by two public entities, the Port of Skagit and the Skagit County Public Utilities District. What they're asking the city to do is enter into a franchise agreement, which is a municipal law, legal term of art, which is just a formal way of saying a contract on how we will allow them to use our rights of way when they want to use it to provide utilities. In this agreement, it's fairly limited in the fact that what they're trying to do is seek a use of our right of way to hook up to a NOC, which is a network operation center. I like to use an analogy of the brainstem in a fiber optic telecommunications network that's located in the city and then run fiber conduit outside the city so they can service unincorporated areas. They're not asking to have carte blanche use of all public rights of way, but only that particular route that's set forth in the exhibit so they can get to their NOC outside the city and serve the greater unincorporated Skagit area. And the franchise agreement is limited to a franchise area that just simply is that route that they've described in their exhibit. They don't have any rights, other than those rights, to utilize those streets and rights of way they've identified in that area. They will not be providing telecommunications services inside the city unless they're providing it for their own facilities or the PUD's facilities. And if there's any existing conduit that the PUD has already installed, we still have a right to inspect to make sure they meet our code before we incorporate that into this franchise agreement. The city has, over time, been preempted in how it's authorized to negotiate telecommunications franchises. One of those preemptions is that we cannot, by state law, seek a franchise fee. So what, none of a sudden here, if that law should change, then this contract contemplates such change, then we can bring it back for such franchise fees. Again, this is a agreement introduction. We will try to bring this on for approval at the next city council meeting. However, if you have any questions today, I'd be happy to entertain them. Or if you had questions that develop in the next two weeks, certainly we can deal with it at that time.
Okay, any questions for Kevin about this tonight? Again, please reach out if you have other questions for him, but we would bring it back. Okay, if there's no questions, then thank you, Kevin. All right, that completes our agenda items. I would ask our city attorney if there's a need for an executive session this evening.
There is, Madam Mayor. I'd ask that the city council meet an executive session for a period of ten minutes to discuss legal counsel matters relating to enforcement action, litigation or potential litigation to which the city, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in either adverse legal or adverse financial consequence to the city pursuant to RCW 423110 subsection 1i. No action after.
All right, with that, then we'll be adjourned at 8:04.